Call the meeting to order, don't do that again. It is three oh four, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I will so move.
I will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero, the agenda is approved. Moving on to our study session, it's like deja vu all over again.
Right.
Okay, first item, board evaluation. This was a discussion, well, they're all discussions, but we don't have a technical evaluation form. So, we want to talk about how we are going to evaluate ourselves. In looking at our board goals, I think the evaluation should be in line with the board goals. And it could be as easy as going through each of the goals and we comment just on our achievement or lack thereof or need to improve. We can, we can just do a simple rating system on each of the bullet points under the goals. We could do a general comment for just the number goal, like goal one, goal two, goal three. I'm open for input.
Where is this goals list?
The goals.
The way he's looking at is this, he's looking at the education goals.
It's attached to the agenda, it says Board of Education Goals twenty-two and twenty-three.
Okay.
I don't know if I have that.
I have that.
Well, it, it was.
That should open a handbook, it's not in there, it's attached to the agenda. So, if you have your computer, I could have Pam just wanna copy all.
I printed it from the.
Oh, it's okay, you don't have to.
You can look at it, it's on the agenda when you look at the.
Here, you wanna share with Judy and I'll share with Mary.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Do you want like a grid or?
But my feeling, well, I, I like the fact that the reaching our goal is a part of the evaluation.
Yes.
Is one item, in other words, we can go through this and we say, one of our evaluations is how we reach the goals. But is there other evaluations such as any specific other things that we may want to address?
Can I ask you if you have them, because Pam said she brought them in and I don't see them.
I don't.
I don't, but I don't wanna.
I don't.
What's that?
She brought the hand, I thought she had the handbook she brought.
Brought the.
Is it in this stack right here, or is that all those old?
No, these are all the, I asked for copies.
We have, we have a couple copies.
Yeah.
I have it on computer, she has a hard copy, so we're, we're muddling by that. Okay.
So, we're good. Okay. No problem.
So, Michelle, you were saying that other stuff beyond, beyond the three goals, if there were other stuff we wanted to.
If there's anything else, in other words, this would be one very good way to know if we, if evaluating us. But is that the only way we evaluate, is it just by how we reach our goals? Do the goals encompass everything that we as a board wanna be? That's only the thought that I had.
The goals.
Mary will be here at three fifteen, sorry.
The, can you let her know that we just got started on the evaluation.
That's all I was thinking is that there's no form for us to, you know, as a group, that this is the only thing we have to evaluate ourselves with.
I, I think this is a stepping stone to evaluate ourselves. I think it's very complete as far as our jobs are concerned.
Right.
Um, I think there are other things we may feel free to add to this. But I think to keep this simple, I think the best way to evaluate ourselves is to use this as a reference. And comment, we all make comments, just like we assemble for Dr. Brege's goals.
Right.
And we assemble those comments in one document. And we should eat, but in, in, we're, with Dr. Brege's, we synthesize our comments. I don't think we should synthesize them, I think all, each of our individual comments should be part of the board evaluation. And we keep them brief, you know, they could be a paragraph, I mean, there's not, there's not, because you could say, for me, I went through all the goals and they're either, we either completed them or they're ongoing. And they're ongoing because they actually are something we do all the time. It's not something to have a finite achievement of. Which is when we designed the goals, I remember saying that we didn't have solid metrics. You know, if you guys remember when we talked about this, these are more ongoing ethereal goals in, in general as a board. And they're, they're, if you look at any of these, right, ensure proper board governance. We don't do that and then we're done, we're always doing that, so.
That just reflects the year.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, that's what the evaluation, yeah, it's the evaluation based on.
Right. Okay.
And we only half evaluate Judy, Judy only has a half. You're not responsible for anything before December, right? Hey, Mary.
Hi gang.
Hi, Mary.
You're on camera.
That's how she likes it. So, that would be, that would be my suggestion, is we could just each be tasked, use this twenty-two, twenty-three as a guideline, like Michelle said, and then add to it as you see fit, if there's other things we wanna comment on.
I'm coming behind you.
Can I give you something?
Yes, water please, and the other basket, my lunch basket.
The tub or the basket?
Ooh.
There's candy or there's.
And I, I do have regular coffee as well in my, if everybody ever wants it.
I'll have the tub.
Okay. Let's just fire that one.
As you can tell.
FedEx ad down to. Okay.
Thank you.
Mary, in summation, we're talking about evaluations, that the evaluation should be based on, thank you. Based on our goals with the ability to comment beyond the goals, exclusively on the goals that we set. A lot of the goals that we set as we're reviewing are ongoing, are things that we don't just complete, there's stuff we always do. So, things that we felt were important that were accomplished in the past year, we can comment on those. Uh, and otherwise, we can say the board is, is dutifully, you know, performing this ongoing, whatever we want to say. Uh, I think we should each write something up to evaluate the board, to look at the board from our point of view. And then combine as our final.
Like we did with the superintendent.
Like we did with the, the comments section superintendent. Although, like I said, I don't think we should synthesize those, I think they should all stand on their own. Because I think each, but each person's comments in this case are important. So, to speak, you know, it's, it's, I think in order to evaluate ourselves, the voices should be heard, right? As opposed to just being one entity. That's just my thought, I'm not.
And I'll see.
I, I like the idea of us just like, we ended at the end, so maybe we come with our, our comments.
Okay.
Then we, you know, we have a point of view as a group where we wanna, you know, where, where we think we landed. So, I think we should, I think that conversation's important.
Okay.
And, and then to have an understanding of where we landed and, and then that directs us for a more unified approach of how we go forward with it, if we wanna revise it or fine tune it or, you know what I mean? At least like that next step as a group.
Okay, so, so let's do this, let's have an assignment to come back with our comments on our year in review. Uh, we could set a date to either do that as a, easier to do it outside of closed and open as kind of a study session. So, to, we can find a study session to tack that on to, so we don't have to add another study session.
We're gonna go through these ourselves and then evaluate our.
Evaluate these, add comments, we'll come together, we'll synthesize, but leaving room for specific. Like if you wanted to say Judy added this, and we could just actually put that in the, if we feel that are that particular part of your voice needs to be expressed and not synthesized, I think that's important.
Okay. Do we have this as a Google Doc that's been shared, so we can write on it rather than print out?
Like I did.
Yeah, like you just shared.
Michael, share it, remember to make a copy.
Right, make a copy, otherwise it will put it on the original and then everyone has to.
I mean, I do think it's important that there's a particular, or one collective voice, so.
Right.
What, where we end, I think should be, kind of like this, it should be a collective voice. So, I also think that when you look at this for yourself and evaluate each of the goals, I would also keep in mind any revision or how you see this goal for next year.
Yeah.
Or there may be other goals you wanna add.
That's what Michelle was saying.
Well, that's, we're gonna talk about that next.
This is not the confined.
So, I'm, I'm trying to keep it to the evaluation process.
I mean, like for each such, we make, we can make like, like, let's say, one thing we can do is like per goal, we can make a commendation.
It's linked, it's very linked.
Like, you know, we were good at this or whatever, and a recommendation, so it's balanced out, along with our comments.
Yeah. Yeah. That's fine.
And then I agree with you, there should be like one unified, unified voice that is coming.
Right, at the end.
Okay. Michael, when is our next study session?
And that's according for us as a group. One is.
And we're gonna, we're gonna do a study session before the next meeting to talk about like strategic plan. But that's probably pretty full, but.
The twenty-second?
What if we came together earlier?
Yeah.
Can we?
That's in one, is that in one week or two weeks?
And that works for everybody. That's one week.
That's next week, and we had a two o'clock start time, so we could do, if we could do it one o'clock start time, then we could, then we could finish this, then we could do it.
Sure. That works for everybody.
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, but be sure that we.
Okay, and we'll have it done August, which is accordance to our calendar.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Actually, it's maybe a great moment to do it before we meet with cabinet two, so we will be crystallized by the, by the hour.
Wow, that's a great idea. I like that idea, actually.
Yeah. We really, we really do have a good reason to squeeze it in.
Okay. I'm a little lost on how the crystallization comes into play, but.
Well, by the end of it, hopes, the, the hope is that we will all as, as a group be unified. And then that way, if we have the strategic plan presented to us, we also would be able to respond to them then and there. Hey, well, what we were thinking of is, or one thing we all agree on is.
Right. This is what we'd like to accomplish.
I, I think as, as we found, as we found when we were doing this last year, Mary, you could correct me if I'm wrong, is that everything that we kinda landed on that was outside of what you have in front of you was in the strategic plan. I think it kind of, it found a home, so it was either, these are the things that we're specifically responsible for. And everything else was in the strategic plan, and it kind of, that's why I think having a, a, a good working strategic plan just answers everything all the time, you know, it kind of.
Right. I mean, I, I think this, I, I agree with you, I think we're giving the direction, the vision, and, and then we're holding ourselves accountable to how we work as a governance team and how we are communicating and that direction in terms of what that vision is. And the strategic plan in collaboration with Michael and his team is the development of that, and that's really the, the how, how to get there.
Right.
So, we're really watching like, here's where we want, where we wanna get, this is what we are identifying is what's really important. The strategic plan is the living document of how we're getting there. And then for us, it's really about really holding that accountable to ourselves and to our staff.
A stamp.
So that we are tracking the effectiveness of how well we're communicating that and how well it's actually happening. And that's really where our job comes in, so we, they're really, all really go almost simultaneous.
They do, they do.
Um, you know, when we first started this, we started with, you know, setting that, that original mission and vision and and we were working on this at the same time we were work, before we even, we were working on the strategic plan. So, we kinda went back and, and if you remember when we first did this, we kind of then pulled out some of the things out of this so that it could stay more board governance focused.
Right, exactly, that's, that's perfect. And the more complete, because it, it comes to, as we learned a long time ago, we are the what and why, and they are the how. And that helps define relationships and keeps the kind of job duty descriptions clean, you know, as we all work. Okay, so.
So, one o'clock?
One o'clock on.
Sorry, what day?
On next Tuesday, we, it was scheduled for two, but we're gonna add an hour so we can do this and, and get this complete.
The day is already.
What, I know, it's, it's, it's a busy time, but what I really appreciate is doing this all in advance.
Get it together.
Because remember, it was, going through this last year was, you know, it took all, a while, we were several months into this school. This is great timing, and I think we could even do a better job to tighten it up even for the next year by moving things up, so.
I agree.
It's all good, we appreciate it, it's getting better and tighter.
Yep.
So, we just finished A and B on the agenda.
No, because we have to do goals for next year.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking is how do we set goals for next year, if you have any.
Although, it's kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
I don't think, I, I mean, that's what I was saying before, I think we have to do the evaluation as best we have.
As well, see what we're missing.
Yes.
So, we'll, we'll, so this is part one, we'll do part two next week.
Next time, too.
So, we'll finish up, so we'll do evaluation and goals.
So, as we set, that's how we did it.
Right.
Great.
I was weird, you said commendation or commendation.
But goals, goals, let's be clear, this is, it's the twenty-two, twenty-three evaluation, twenty-three, twenty-four goals.
Yep.
Right.
So, we can separate.
I mean, if there's anything that's top of mind right now, that you wanna bring up, so we can keep that in mind while we're thinking about this, I think that's.
Right. As I was reviewing, as I was reviewing these and going through this, the amount of things that were either ongoing or in progress or done is basically everything, right? So, it's, they're all gonna translate to the next year's goals, if this is what we believe on. And if you think more specifically, like, let's say, for an example, but I know this is not the case, we open our day off, right? That's a strategic plan goal, right, that's on the facility agenda, so, so it finds anything that we, we talk about here, we'll jump over to him.
Right. That's the bucket.
That's keep, that's, so if there's anything, really what's gonna be informed from next week's conversation is that there's anything else that has to go over and you're in the strategic plan.
Yeah, can I just say how much I appreciate that, and this is why this works, because that would not have been one of my goals for the plan, like the. But after that was suggested, that it, it became really a, this is such a pivotal focus for us.
Yeah.
That it helped us, it puts structure to, to where now we have a steering committee, because there's so many things. By, by making it part of the strategic plan, like made it, it really matters, you know, and it, it's expanded
Created focus.
And it's just gonna be better in the long run, so that's where, again, this process works.
Right.
Because we wouldn't have added it and it should be, this is a huge goal.
Yeah, and it's got many layers to it.
Yep.
All right, so we have, so we have a lot of homework for next week. We're gonna write up your evaluations and think about goals for next year that are not included on this particular form.
Don't be afraid, though, to continue the goals that are there as a continuing.
No, but they, I, like I said, when I looked through it, I wrote ongoing for everything.
Yeah, that's what I feel, yes.
Because it's all, it's all stuff we're always doing.
Or there's other things we'd like to add.
Exactly.
And Mrs. Marcus, what I, what you're gonna get is, you're gonna get two documents, the board goals. But then I also am sending you a copy that says Mrs. Marcus's copy, so you can type on that one.
Oh, yeah, so you don't have to go make, just type on yours.
I have two things here then, when I go online.
Yeah, and the one that starts with Mrs. Marcus's copy is your copy.
Well, I'll get it.
And then no one, you can write on that, no one else will see it.
Okay, okay, Mrs. Marcus's.
All right, any more questions on the evaluations or goals?
No.
Nope.
I hate giving homework so early in the year, so.
We also have the calendar homework already, I was thinking about that.
The governance handbook, let's move over to that. I am, I am, this is an opportunity, if there are any specific amendments to or revisions, this is when we're gonna look at that. It took us, um, better part of like three years to get it to where it is now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was pretty happy where we left with last.
I mean, it's not, but you need a lot of changes on this last.
We had a handbook, Mary came in with the hammer and chisel and we just.
We took out a lot.
Took out a lot and sent this thing, made it cleaner, and I, I read through it again sitting, I'm like, all right, it's good with me.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I, I don't think I can rewrite it, I think it's just important as a practice that we look at it every year.
Yeah.
So that we use the documents, I don't, you know, I think it's, we put the time into create these documents, we should be using them just like the strategic plan, so it, as a discipline, I think, as a, you know, regular calendar of activities for the board, it's important for us to include this extra time.
Right, but since Judy wasn't there the first time this went around, I've, you know, this is an opportunity for her.
Thank you.
I, I had a comment on it, that's the only thing that I would.
And Michelle, but, but go ahead.
Judy, it's before me.
No, I mean, I'm, you know, I would say that having come in without reading this and experiencing the governance with you folks for about the last eight or nine months, I don't look back and think I wish anything was different, I think things are running smoothly and they, they feel comfortable and appropriate.
Yep, I just didn't wanna even put your name on it until.
Thank you.
Right, we agree.
Thank you so much.
Just going back, the one thing that, one comment that I do have, and I think we should look at it, and I think it's tied to the calendar, is that we should look at, and when we were doing this, the annual meeting, we were actually, as we were writing this, we were doing it for the first time in terms of how we were setting up what that planning looked like. So, now that we've done it this year, I think it's important to look at this and say, can we improve on it? Because I think we can improve on the timing, I would push things more forward. I would rather have us had a, this follow-up strategic plan meeting before staff opening day.
Yeah, and we totally agree with you, we, we, we're gonna come back to you next week with the same thing, that we would love to push that up so that it was, because we would like to have that time to internalize that conversation before that next day we leave for a leadership conference, like, so.
Right.
We'd love to do that.
And have time for us to all kind of come back and say, okay, we're, this is what we, we all agree this is what we were talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
And before it gets translated to the principals.
A hundred percent.
Staff opening day, and the other suggestion I would have is that when we do staff opening day as a result of that strategic plan, that we're all really clear on what is the key messages that we want as board, as a governance team.
Yeah.
To really communicate for each of the different, you know, start of the year things. So, I see that as, you know, you have staff opening day, that's one message, another is your orientation, like what is the key message as a really driving our focus for the year? We, if we have that umbrella thinking, while we go into each of these events, I think we can have a really strong message for here's where we wanna get to this year and get the whole community very focused on that, so.
Yeah. We feel the same way, like I didn't take that deep of a dive into, because I was still kind of draft, because we had not had that meeting in between. We can move, like, I think we should set those dates now, because if you, if you're able to give me those dates, when we do our check-ins, when we, we, you know, we have our, our message so that there's time for us to go back to the principals and, you know, even just new teachers. If we set those now, I can then set those for the rest of the administrative teams.
I would, I would agree with you, sorry, were you finished?
I was just gonna add one thing to, to the timing part of it. I would, I mean, and this is really lofty, but I think we should consider this, because this is really late planning for any standards of planning, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say that we should be doing this before June, because it should really be affecting potentially what your budget is.
A hundred percent.
Do you know what I mean?
Totally agree.
So, it makes more sense that, but the reason we pushed it back is because we wait for test results and that last kind of strategic plan.
And we can still do that update for you, because we can't get around that right now, but we should move a, a bulk of this up instead of waiting till the summer's over, like before people leave on vacation.
Yeah, before the end of.
Especially since we have the new metrics of I R E and stuff.
That's what I was just gonna say, we have other ways to measure.
Right, let's, let's stop basing everything on the, on the CASP scores.
Right.
And so, I.
Do internally.
Yeah.
And then I think that then we, we'll just, we need to push all that planning.
Yeah.
What did you say, Mary?
We should push all.
And with, with I R E D and with N W E A, we can also then, when we do that, when we do our check-ins and the updates with you, they'll be more substantive, because we're gonna actually, that's why we went that direction, so we can show you something instead of just saying, let's wait until, you know.
September.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, because of the, when you're doing the data checks for the, the new measurements, that may also change your planning. I also feel like that can be late, but that's going to just, feels like if you do your phase and then you do your check-in, by the time you can respond, you're already halfway into the year, so that feels like, you know, it may be the only way to do it, and that's Dustin's.
Yeah, I still think we can improve on the timeline.
Right.
Okay, so let's definitely revise the timeline.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say when we had the, the meeting at the S T C room, I was confused about what our role was in that meeting.
Yes.
I thought that we were, and it's my mistake, but I thought that it was, so in my mind, we were a month behind at that point. To your point, I thought that we were planning where we were.
For next year?
Yeah, but we were actually looking back, so I was there, but you guys had not even gone on your San Diego trip yet.
Right.
And so, I would be interested to know what is the role of the board at that meeting? Is that another update, or is it, because at the end, you were asking for instruction a little bit, but we were destroyed.
I mean, the goal of that meeting is that when we set the strategic plan last year, we said that instead of waiting to the end of the year in the summer and hearing for the first time how we did on the strategic plan, that we would schedule at that time last year in advance when we were going to have mid-year, you know, throughout the year reviews.
Yes. Yeah.
So that we would be really having a report of where we were on the strategic plan. So, that was a report, that's not unlike what was in November.
Yes. Exactly.
And then we planned the third one, which would be the last review and planning for the next year was the one we did this summer.
Yeah.
So, I would suggest, to your point, that that one that we did at that time, which I think was May or, when was it, April, May?
The one that was upstairs.
But that should be the end of the year one.
Me too, that's what I thought it was, minus the numbers.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Right.
That's what I, that's what I thought it was.
And I, we need your feedback on that too, because to me, it seems to me like school starts now, right? In two months, I, I do a check-in, it doesn't have to be, you know, with the data that you have, do you know what I mean? Like how is that behavior thing going, how is?
Sure. Sure, I mean, I think it check-in, even if we don't have something to share, that we don't have something and this is why, but.
Could be in two months.
Yeah.
Right, it's really about holding ourselves accountable.
That way, it's part of the conversation.
But the check-in could come a little bit later if we were stretching that last one to the end of the year, so that they, we get a little bit better, like I would say, maybe adding a month to that check-in, so that we have a better, you know, we're, the check-in right now is August, May, September and October, we were in November, I'm saying.
That's in November.
Uh, yeah, well, I suggested moving that first one. The teachers are supposed to be evaluating all along, obviously.
The later. Right.
Move that later, so if you're going to not have the one, and you're gonna use the last one, which would come at, at the end of the year.
I mean, we're in November and, and May is good.
I would see that as the first, the first quarter.
Yeah.
Well, that's, well, but I.
We should consider the, if the CASP, if the CASP scores are gonna be part of that discussion.
See, because that would be late.
That's exactly where they're gonna have to be, because we don't.
Right, so if they are.
I mean, there's lots of things in the strategic plan that are not before, or just.
No, no, I'm saying, exactly, to that point, everything else isn't except for that.
Yeah.
So, are we gonna have, there's, whenever, whenever the best time to schedule that final one is, that encompasses everything else but the CASP scores? And then the next time we get together has to be after the CASP scores.
Right, exactly.
Right, so.
So, what we did in the summer really isn't the right time for that one, that should be done earlier, but then, right?
That's exactly.
That's a respect.
But everybody else.
So, the May, the May one should be the last one, minus the CASP.
Right, the CASP, yeah, right.
Minus the CASP.
Because I felt like what.
And then there's a CASP update in strategic plan.
Yes, exactly.
I would suggest you did October as your first one.
I, I'm.
And then, and then you do January, because it's after they do their data chats and have you.
Yeah.
So, you have October, then you have November, December, January will be your second one, and then April, May could be your final.
Final.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're looking for an update on.
January's a rough one, because.
Maybe early February, yeah.
Because we.
I think that's pushing.
February to May is, is.
Maybe it's the end of January.
I think you're pushing in doing that, Mary, I really do.
Pushing, pushing what?
If we have it in October, then.
You'd only have had a couple of months to see how you're actually, I, I would.
Yeah, but you're also out the CASP scores.
But you're also going to get a date on the baseline.
I know, but we will have CASP scores.
But I, right, I, I do like that idea.
You can have a report on the baseline.
And just like with the behavior, with chronic absenteeism, we, we're gonna have data to share.
Right, it's not just, there's other areas that we can be checking in on, we don't wanna wait till January before we start saying, well, oh, the behavior plan isn't really working out so well.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, how about, well, how about we do.
I don't think we could do that.
You know what, we were actually talking about two different areas here, this is the issue.
Right, we're talking about the strategic plan in general.
In general.
But, but, but the, I'm talking about the areas of the strategic plan.
And maybe. Right, but maybe not all areas will have the complete data, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't have regular check-ins throughout.
Of, of the areas that you want the information on.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it's, to keep it part of the conversation, my suggestion is that when we say that, look, this is why we're not sharing with with the student achievement goal, like, like, or like the, you know, the three percent, like, but we could share with you other data that we're using along the way.
But, right, it doesn't have to be, just as, as an early check-in, it could be, here's how it's working with the teachers. Here's how the data, the professional development's going, this is actually getting implemented.
Yeah.
They could be checking, they could be giving a report on how well that's going, even though you don't have the testing yet. You don't wanna find out later that, that teachers weren't meeting and discussing, so why not?
Well, that, yeah, well, this is up to the administration.
So, I, I would like the check-ins, my concern about it is that I could feel how much time admin was spending in preparing for the check-ins.
Yeah.
And so, I, I hesitate to have them come too many times, but I don't mind pacing ourselves along the way.
Right. Right.
So, we, we do this though, like, when I meet with the administrative team, like, they, they do check, we do that a month, right?
All the time, this is happening anyways.
I'm assuming this is happening already.
Yes, so it's not, I mean, it is a task, especially it's different, our meetings and, you know, in front of the board. But it's not going to be that much more, and I, I think that, what I like about it is it keeps it in conversation.
Yeah.
So that staff people that are watching know that, look, this is something that we care about and support all year long. Because if there is something that comes up, like with the attendance, or with the student behavior and accountability panel, like, because that was pushed so far every Monday through the summer, and then we had our, our leadership conference, it's like, I'm gonna have more substantial.
Right, it could be a short report, it, it could be that the, you know, the N W E A is working great so far.
So, to share. Yep.
And so far, it's been implemented. It, it could just be a report on how that's going.
Keeps the terminology alive.
Right, so that we know that instead of getting to the end, or, you know, when it's, we're at the new year and finding out, well, the teachers didn't, don't really understand how to implement it.
Right.
Yeah. Do you wanna do November?
I wanna we have that conversation in October.
Yeah, so you're suggesting, if I'm understanding you, you're suggesting like October one, I don't know when it would be in January. I'm thinking something like November one, February one, May one to close it out, minus scores.
Well, we had before November, like early November, because we wanted to do it before Thanksgiving, as like the first one. But, and that may still be fine where it is, it's that, but they're just going to be implementing their first assessments, right, after the base. After the baseline, if I read that.
Right, but there's, yeah, but there's other things that we can share.
I, I wanted to add, if I, if I can, I think that the meet, the, those particular meetings need to have a purpose, besides just dropping him in the days. They need to inform the board for us to be informed to make decisions, right? Otherwise, it's just an information only, and if that's what we want, that's fine, but I don't, but I wanna make sure that if he's planning them, like, if we're saying, just for instance, it should be in October, but we'll need to know in November for X, Y, Z, just let's find the best time, where, like, like you guys had mentioned, the budget, right?
Right.
So, the meeting in the spring needs to inform the budget, decisions based on that check-in, that kind of thing.
Right.
I think that they, I don't wanna, I don't wanna skirt that and just, oh, well, it would've helped, it would've helped if we had this update last week, you know, 'cause now we're, we have to keep that in mind.
My- My point would be, is that to have a check-in early is to allow us to see, based on the strategic plan we've all agreed on, is how is that going? Is it getting communicated? Is it getting implemented?
The implementation.
It's about accountability, and if there's things that need to be changed, then it would inform making any changes along the way, or it may just be, it's all working the way we are hoping. We'll see at the next check-in.
And that's okay, as long as there's data to support having the presentation, right?
But I think that-
So, as long as there's whatever the plan is calling for, whether it's security data, food construction data, uh, scores,
Right.
that those are in place and staff has time to accumulate them to present.
But some of that can be, can be, uh, it, it, some of that can be more of a narrative. Like, when we talk about the staffing for C S E A, right? It could be, this is working really well, and you can have feedback on, it's a change. So, you could get feedback on, here's where we're having challenges, we actually wanna add more staff, or we wanna add overtime.
I a hundred percent agree, that's why it, it should follow the right time.
I mean, can we also propose targeted questions, um, per area, so that it's not just that, you know, the staff when they're preparing for this feel like they have to do like a really comprehensive thing, but that we have specific questions.
Right, we don't need, we don't need everything every time.
So, targeted questions that would be helpful to them to guide what data they're going to give to us, um, but, you know, wouldn't be yes or no questions. It would be, how is such and such going on a scale, or you could say on a scale of zero to 10, where 10 is like, you know, exactly where you wanna be, you know, where are you guys, or something.
Right. I-
So, you wanna bring the first one up?
I hesitate to be too limited, too structured in, in, in all of that in, in every way, because I, I think we, it's the strategic plan that, it, overall, so, I think you would come back, by nature of where you are, you would say, like, with the testing before, we're not recording on this right now because we don't have it, we're gonna report on this. It doesn't have to be, it's gonna be where it is at that time, do you know what I mean? So, it may be, you know, there, you can ask some specific questions, but I wouldn't limit it and make it so structured in that reporting. And the structure is the plan.
Right, and a good example would be like the strategic plan goal for Elrodame. Like, we're gonna share with you, here's where we are, here's what we've done to date, here's what we're doing next.
Right.
You know, and that'll be more a narrative than, you know, something that's-
Right. It's more of an update.
Yeah, there's nothing for us to inform.
Right.
Right.
So, how about October fifteenth, February fifteenth, May fifteenth?
Can I suggest November, though? Here's why I think November is better.
I mean, approximately, I don't mean exactly those dates.
November is in here already.
It was already November originally.
Oh.
You were suggesting-
I would say, I mean, I like November over October, and I'll tell you why, because, I mean, usually, like, the, the, like, right now, school's just started, and it's sort of like the, um, what, the honeymoon period, right? But the real learning kinda starts in earnest, like, gets going in September a little bit. Um, and then you really get a sense, I think, of where, of how things are going performance-wise in early November, a little bit more. I don't know, it's just, it seems to be a little more like the stable, um, that temperature check in November versus-
That's what I was saying.
Right, but that was our thinking originally when we put it in November.
Yeah, I kinda like-
And we wanted to be before Thanksgiving, because-
Right, for sure.
Yeah.
Once you get into that, it's very challenging.
The holidays, it's, absolutely. Can you throw me a Snickers?
Sure.
Throw the whole box.
We already have, just so you know, we already have an April, May review of strategic plan, and we already have a November. So, we were kind of already there. The question is, exactly what, you know, as we tune this up, maybe-
What do you wanna do that? I think also we need your input, Michael, about what, what your, what your team thinks, right?
Yeah, I can, I can bring back just some, uh, some thoughts about, like, when updates would be most productive, part of consideration.
Right. Part of the goal of this was that, from the experience in the past, to try and set these times during the year is too difficult, and, and then we end up pushing it to the point where we get to July before we start to see something. So, we're better off, as a group, agreeing, like, what, when are these, and getting them on a calendar, so that everyone knows what we're working towards, and the date's just there, and it just happens, like the board meetings. It's just really important to have them, and, you know, if we wanna tweak the timing of it, but, and then as you get to those, to, you know, the details of the report, I think, I think it will take a tweak.
Yeah. Let me do a check-in with my team, and then, if I could, just send them for your consideration, just, uh, you know, our, what, what months would be better.
Yeah. Yeah, look at the, maybe pull off the manual meeting section of our handbook, and kind of make the adjustments and say, here's, based on our conversations, here's what they look like now.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to see two during the year, before we are looking at doing a November.
Two strategic plans.
How many, two, two updates during the year.
Sure.
Well, we have that. We have November and April, May.
Right. I'm just saying, as a guide, as going forward, I think it's important.
I agree, and I, I, I'd like-
And then the third one is really, uh, planning for the next one.
Right, yeah. The thing is, it's, it's just, it's always been ridiculous that the CASP scores come out when they do, because they don't help us inform the budget. The budget's already approved. You could do an amended budget based on the scores.
You have a fortified basis, yeah.
Right, but, um, as far as academic programming, you usually already started your year, by, by the time those things get filed.
Yeah, there's some legislation in, in, in progress right now, uh, that Governor Newsom's looking at, to hold the testing companies accountable to have that data earlier, because we're all struggling.
It's hard if they have to score, if they give them a scantron, it's already-
Behind the eight ball, right.
It shouldn't be instant. My thought was it should be-
But you would have feedback from the principals and their staff, and should, what, you know, what their challenges are, right? They're gonna be seen.
Well, I'm hoping with the I ready and the N W E A that we have way more data than CASP even gives us, that we can actually-
We will.
We can actually pivot.
We will.
We can pivot those two times a year that Mary's talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like the challenge really is, like, we can set a direction, and we can agree, like, here's where we wanna get to, but then it has to get to the sites, to the principals, to the teachers, and, and they have to be collaborating, and that, that's where the real work is happening, and in the classroom. So, I feel like this year, that's really gonna be a, like, a great focus, because we clearly are able to now communicate this, but we need to make sure that at each of the school sites, it's really filtering down to the different, to the teachers, and how they work together, and how they deliver that in the classroom, and I think that report you can have, that's more of a, you know, a narrative about how is it going? How often are you guys meeting? Is it working? Are there other things that you need, or changes in schedule that are gonna make your ability to deliver this in the classroom better? Or maybe it's working great? That's, those are the things, I think, that we don't need test results to know, how it's working with the staff to really implement, because that's so key for getting the results you want.
What would be interesting to see is, next year, with these new testing metrics, if, or matrices, if, um, we can get ahead of the curve with CASP testing, and that we can evaluate our, our students so accurately that the CASP is only gonna be a reflection of what we've already done, and that there's not gonna be any surprises. You know, we're gonna know where our students fall. It shouldn't be a surprise, and it may be that already, it's just not communicated that way to us, but that, that'd be something to see.
Well, the, another reason why we went with the N W E A, so that we can, it's, it's more of, um, an opportunity to monitor progress than it is to kind of, like, wait till the end.
Right, right. Do we wanna move-
I think you asked me, how often are the N W As administered to the kids, or the I, I, I ready? How, how often are they-
I think it's three times.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll share with you next week. I don't know the exact, um-
Right. That's why, I think it's three times yourself. They do a base, and then they do November, and then there's another one in this frame.
Yeah, and they- Yeah, right.
So, then maybe our, our meetings should follow those.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I-
Maybe that should be a tendency.
He's gonna check, that's why he's gonna check with them, so.
Yeah, that's why I asked to check with them, so that, so that it's really purposeful.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that we don't set a meeting date that just happened to be the week before we find something.
Yeah.
So, do we wanna move, move on to a different thing? Do we wanna move our evaluation goals in line with superintendent? 'Cause according to this, we start, yeah, we start his like three months before ours, and we could tie it in, we could do it all together.
Yes.
Yeah. I think ideally, that's the way it should be.
Okay, so let's make that correction.
I, I think we were just, this is how we end.
So, then we're gonna move the board goals and evaluations.
To coincide with yours.
To coincide with yours.
Okay.
When was that?
It has to coincide with your.
May, it's gonna be, yeah, it's, it's-
No, not for this year.
For Michael, it's gotta be done by June first.
We're, we're still finishing this year.
June first.
This, you're not, we're still gonna-
No, we're gonna do these this year, but next year, we'll start a little earlier.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Anything else on the governance handbook?
I, I just would like, and, I'm sorry that I, I have to say this, but I would like to remind that, that sometimes when we are in session and we're listening and awaiting our turn to speak, sometimes, some of our board, there's the, the, we speak too long, and I think this needs to be something that we need to keep in mind, that's under, board members should avoid repeating in during deliberation, and keep comments brief. I sometimes feel, um, that doesn't have a page.
What page are on?
I gotta really read his handbook in that case.
I know, I'm gonna add page numbers to this, so.
It's under, uh, it's under the one that board meetings, the board uses Robert's Rules of Order, number five, Evidence, Structure, and Process. And, and I, I sometimes feel that, and may, I, maybe I'm the only one, but I sometimes feel that, I mean, being third in line to speak or whatever, that sometimes people before speak quite, sometimes quite lengthy, and I think, I would like to just remind people, this is something that I detected, and I feel that I needed to say something, and I'm just reminding that there's other people on the board that would like to speak.
Well, we do have, board members should avoid repeating comments during deliberation and keep comments brief.
Right.
We did put it in there.
But I would like to emphasize, I'm-
You wanna put it, you wanna put it bold, Rachel? I'm okay with that.
Well, I, I just, I'm just trying to bring up a point, that-
But see, that would go under the board evaluation.
That's what I was just thinking.
That's your opportunity to put down the board evaluation.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, it doesn't say in the board evaluation, in the goals, that you state.
But you and I spoke about that, and you said we can go beyond the goals, and this is what we're talking about.
Okay, yeah, right.
Right, so this would be a comment not related to goal one, two, or three, but is the goal-
But the evaluation doesn't have to be directly correlated to the goals. Like I said, the goals is a step, it's a form of evaluation.
That's right. That's what I was trying to say, that there are other things in there that we should-
Any other comments on the, on the governance handbook?
No, thank you.
Just that they have to change the names of, or that the people that sign it.
Yeah, change, so since we're gonna make changes.
Yeah, I know, it, uh, if, if this is a, a document that goes from year to year, we should always keep it updated as to who the members are.
Yep, we should just do a revision and change the number.
And then put revised by the date that it's revised.
Yeah, don't forget those.
Yeah. And then we will adopt this, once he makes the changes, we'll bring it back.
By the way, that brings up an interesting question that I have. I know we did all of the board policy, Mary was really on top of this, uh, or, uh, was it, si, item number six, with the, the board policy on our, uh, on six? And we, and they have to go to C S B A for something, and then come back. Have they ever been dropped into our, that, that they are now-
The ones that have been approved are dropped and are, are adopted by the date of the, and, and I'll have for you, um, next week, the policies that have not been set, we've reset those deadlines for, like, student services and for those policies, so those are coming up.
Couple more.
Well, we didn't finish the construction ones, right?
I don't think we did.
Well, that's the ones we were talking about.
Which, which ones, the?
We did the facilities and construction one, we started that one, but we never finished.
We never finished it, yeah.
We need to finish it before we do the math.
I thought we had finished that one. I didn't know that we hadn't. I thought we pretty well, I was thinking more about student service.
But we got through some of it.
No, we started to go through it, but-
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were far from finished, actually.
Did we finish it? We didn't? I thought we had.
Okay. So, if there's nothing else on that, we're gonna move into closed session.
Okay, so I just have a couple things, I'm sorry.
Oh, so, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I just wanted to kind of revisit something that's in the, uh, the handbook. I just wanna revisit a couple things, and I wish there was a page number, and I'm sorry, but-
Oh, what's the Roman numeral on that?
Uh, so, just where it is, governance, governance culture.
Got it.
What item is that, number?
It is, uh, but, it's Roman numeral four.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Go ahead. So, I just wanna kind of revisit just some of the expectations, because this helps me become a better superintendent, is, uh, the items, um, one of them, it may seem minor, but it's inform the superintendent, site administrators, just ahead of time when planning to visit, it's, I like to, to have, um, I started something a, a couple of years ago, where the music teacher, uh, like, let's say that, um, uh, you know, Justin gets out there and, you know, he's, Klotzel's doing his performance, many times he would just be like, good evening, thank you, and people needed to see our administration out there, and doing, introducing the, you know, introducing your teacher, and, and, you know, getting out there in front. And so then I, uh, also have asked them to, you know, welcome, uh, school board members that are there, because it's, it's, you know, it's, it's nice that people know that you're there. I've said this before. This, uh, our board goes to more things than any board I've ever had, and I love that you do, and it's, so they recognize that. It just would be helpful to know, if possible, like, I, I know that, you know, I've accidentally, like, I didn't see somebody there, and I didn't say their name, and it, that doesn't feel good, so if you are attending, like, an event or some, please, if you can, let me know so I can let, because there, we're all scrambling for, who did you see? Who did you see? And it's minutes before.
Should text you then?
Yes, that would be-
Can I add to that then? Because according to the way you like, interpret that sentence, it means that like a spur of the moment type of thing, and this, to me, is what you're referring to, is more planned activities where, when we're there. So, somehow, you inform the incentive ahead of time, when planning to visit schools or tend, to attend functions.
Like, what if we go to a P T A meeting, which I'm planning to do?
I mean, I, so that, yeah, so like, ten functions which we are expected to do, basically. I mean, that's the way I look at it, but I don't drop in on a school anymore, because I feel that, I, you know, I used to be able to do it all the time. I don't do it anymore, because I'm a school board member.
Right, right. So, that, it's, both are correct. I mean, it's, it, there shouldn't be a surprise visit from a board member to a, a school.
Unless you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's not-
You lose plan ahead of time.
It, it's really just for, for the, the event part, you don't have to, but it's, it's awkward sometimes. I like to be able to-
Acknowledge.
Share. It's just, it's a nice thing, like, it's a very special thing about our community, that we have board members that attend every event, and so, it's, it, it's, it's not a problem if you don't, it just, it's, sometimes it's awkward.
Well, then I think in this, when planning to visit schools or attend functions, I think you might want to-
Okay, we can, yeah, yeah.
I mean, 'cause I think that, when me say planning to visit a school, it means, oh, I wanna stop in and see, uh, so and so as a teacher, and, uh-
Oh, I see. Thanks. Okay. Um, the other one is just, um, just on the basic communication. It's just, like, 'cause I have a lot of cabinet members calling me, saying, you know, board members are calling me, and it, and that really, that's kind of, you know, that's board member superintendent one-on-one. Um, you know, if it's, if it has to do with district business, please go through me. If you're emailing, it's great, C C me, like, just so that I'm aware, you know, if, that somebody is, is, so I know what's going on in the district. But, um, I know my staff's getting a lot of phone calls from board members, and then I'm hearing about it later. And so, if, if it's an email, you can write it to the cabinet member, C C me, but please avoid the phone call, like, call me. Call me, and I will find out whatever question that you have.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I mean, we used to, we, I don't, we, our practice was that we don't call staff.
Yeah.
We only call Michael, and if we need to talk to a staff member, we call Michael and say, can I call the staff member?
Unless it, you, you have, like, you're a parent, but you're also a parent, so you can- Unless it, you you have, like, parent, unless, and you're also a parent, so you can.
Yeah, just specifically about the phone. Right, I'm sorry, specifically of the phone, because you can, you can always email Michael and email the staff member.
Right, but when it comes to a phone call.
But, but when it comes to phone, we should not be calling staff at all unless we're in the job of a parent, which three of us are.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I, 'cause I will pick up the phone, like, even if I'm in a classroom, like, I'll pick up the phone, like, if I don't ready, I'll call you right back, 'cause I'm trying to but that's my job and and that's, and I wanna be able to um, you know, answer your question, then I'm kind of aware of everything that's going on, like, I I don't mind the questions.
I even when I email about my student, I make it clear what I email, but you see that I do that, regarding student D M, so that they know that this is a mommy email.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I use my personal email as a parent.
Yeah, that's what I do also.
That's good.
I see, no, if there's ever a chance, um, I did, like, recently, we got an email from a, from a community parent um that sent it to me regarding the football game on Roche Shana, and I sent it right to Michael and Tim. And I told her on, I said, I'm sending this to Michael and Tim, Tim took care of it. Um, I stayed out of it completely.
Yeah.
Um, Tim took care of it, and Tim wrote the parent back.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's just an example, so that's how we wanna do it, because it keeps us clean, and then, and the guy was very, very appreciative, even though I knew Tim handled it, they moved the football game, by the way. Um, I then, I knew Tim handled it, he was like, thank you so much, I'm like, I'd love to take credit for it, this was staff.
But but how that helps me though, is then I know that I've already placed on our leadership team meeting agenda, is the calendar again, because we have new staff, and please make sure that you are are respecting our holidays, so that we aren't putting families in a position where a a child has to make a decision about, you know, do I stay home or do I go to the sport?
And and again, I appreciate the fact, like, this last one we had from this one parent regarding the sex education or the
Oh, yeah.
I need, you're, and and the fact that you respond to them and let us know what you've responded, we feel very comfortable that
Yeah, we'll always let you know.
But I'm saying, the 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 parents say, well, I never heard from the teacher, but you know what, or I've never heard from the board member. I mean, I like, I, at the beginning, I would just say, the year, the thank you for your, yeah, but I don't give any response, but I think it's important that now, and I know that's what you do, I'm just commenting on it, because.
Yeah, because I'm, I want them to know also that you have read it, because if they do, sometimes if they just include me, but they say dear board members, that's awkward for me to to respond, but usually then you'll jump in.
Well, you and I'll check in and see.
Yeah, because it's like, it wasn't to me, but I'm on it, but most of the time, it'll be to the board and me, and I'm happy to
Reply on.
to reply.
Like, recently, we all got the one from the B V about the, the concerned parents about the Fastpass. Did you guys?
No, I didn't get that.
I don't get that.
Uh.
Was it Fastpass Security?
Oh, for the carnival.
For the carnival.
Yeah.
I know what the Fastpass is, but I have not received an email.
Right, so I, that's weird.
I don't, I don't think I got that.
I haven't seen it, but.
Who did they send that to?
I just got a notice about the carnival.
Oh, okay, they said it, it's just you and Dr. Skon and me.
Okay. I, and I talked to Dr. Skon last night.
I thought everybody got it. Yeah, but when it like, so it went to Michael and Dr. Skon and myself. Dr. Skon is handling it.
What's the nature of it, just?
The people who made the donation upfront get a Fastpass at the carnival, and the parents were upset because
That's not fair.
Yeah, it's not fair.
I mean, it's a, it's a P T A initiative.
It's a P, yeah, it's P T A, it's a P T A Dr. Skon issue, it's not a board issue.
It works at Universal Studios, but maybe not.
It's, 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 it's a very visual thing here, like, for people, but it's, it's also when you're a principal trying to support your P T A, and you're trying, you know, it's
Help them fundraise.
Alright, because, because it's, it's innovative and it's, you know, but it's, it's, it's also a visual that uh we need to work on, because some people may be at the carnival and not able to to make purchase.
When they put, when they put um staff on the email, I always make it a practice to let staff deal with it, if it's a staff issue, I don't get involved. So it's really, it's something policies.
Or if I, I'll say, Michael, I knew responding, that Michael will be responding, I mean, I know he's gonna respond.
Yeah. Michael or Kelly or Drew or whoever.
I don't know how he responds to all of them.
Yeah, so I I called and had a conversation about this last night with uh Dr. Skon, and then she replied back.
Yeah, she was there.
And she's gonna meet and.
They're, they're, they're all appreciative and working on it. I thought we sent to everybody, I apologize. I'll be happy to send it to you, if you guys wanna be aware of it, but Okay.
Um, the last thing I I had, just um, just as a, it would be helpful, is in in you all do this, I just would like love some more consistency on, you know, when there are issues in the community and you are hearing about that, is to, is to refer people back right away to the teacher, you know, we have our who do you call, like, you know.
Oh, the five steps.
Yeah, just because it's
I do that a lot.
It's helpful to just, like, we gotta start with the teacher, and please don't try to fix it yourself, like, you know, and because it's easier, like, hand it over to us, so that we can start in the right place, 'cause the closest the issue is to the classroom, the faster that they're gonna get an answer. And it, just like I had to ask for staff to pick up the phone, this is gonna be something I'm asking them to do all year, is when you see something, say something, call the parent immediately. It's, it kinda works the same way, like, you know, you hear something, like, have that teacher call, I'm sorry, the parent call the teacher as well, it works both ways, so.
Thank you, um, I I felt that the board has done an excellent job in the last years, a few years, with this issue, I think that we are letting staff handle what they need to, we are directing staff. We recently got an email um that was apparent about the cell phone policy, right? That's an example, correct me if I'm wrong, of emails we can deal with, 'cause that's policy. So that comes to us, so when it deals with policy, or budget, or those grand board issues, those are what we can take on. And we don't have to defer those to staff. All, but we don't get a lot of those emails either, people don't care about that stuff.
I'm not even sure what you're referencing right now.
Um, we got, and a couple, we see their own.
Lady said, my daughter has asthma and she has to have access to the cell phone.
Must have a watch in case.
They have to have a.
But we got another one before that, but another parent.
Now I would prefer to staff, I wouldn't.
Yeah, but there, there was another one that was just about the policy agenda, but I think I've heard of you on my answer.
Yeah, they didn't like that, so it was another.
That was the initial, but I, I didn't see your answer if there was one on the second, but the second
Which one was that, uh?
In their, the child's, the two children's specific condition, but I think it's because that came only to you
Right.
about the questions of what documentation and should I
Oh, you forwarded that to us.
Yeah.
She provided two emails.
Those are two emails.
The first was the question in advance, and then the second was after the fact, the now what?
Okay. But I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of emails that we either get C C'd on, or are are staff emails that they should be dealing with.
Mm-hmm.
We very rarely get an email that, like, I need you to help me with the problem, right? Like, even, uh, you, I don't know if you saw any of them when school was starting and people were with permits and they couldn't get the fit or, or to transfer districts, once again, not our issue, yeah.
Right.
I got a lot of those.
I would agree, I think that the board, and you can, you could tell us otherwise, but I feel like as a board, we really have improved on that and really streamlining that communication.
Yeah.
Yeah.[1621.74]